I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll calls?
You sure can. Commissioner Intuna is out, so Commissioner Betstead?
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Here.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Here.
Chair Hatcher?
Here. Okay. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distance guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in the planning commission meetings until further notice. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing the social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may be in the council chamber. All attendees are required to wear masks to enter the chambers. The meeting will be webcast and accessed at the city's website. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in the meetings by accessing the website, providing written comment on the same website, participating by phone, or coming to the planning commission meeting in person. And again, we are practicing social distancing and can only accommodate a maximum of 16 guests at one time. Can I have approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Hinkle to approve the minutes. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Betstead?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes. Commission Secretary comment?
We do have some comments. Commissioner Hinkle asked that we update him on what the city council considered and took action on on Monday night. So it was ordinance amendment 2020-003, which was to amend the Clovis Municipal Code to clarify and refine the section regarding the regional housing needs assessments and to establish a ministerial process to allow for subdivision of parcels that qualify for development. And Dave Merchant presented that. Dave, would you like to expand on that?
I don't think it requires a lot of explanation at this point. Just to update the commission that the council introduced the ordinance as presented. It'll go back in, I think, at the next meeting for final adoption. That was it.
Want to do anything else? That was it? Okay. Is there any business from the floor? This is an opportunity for anyone of the public who would like to speak and address any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Okay, seen none. I will open the public hearing to consider approval. A request to process a conditional use permit for a vehicle rental and leasing facility for a portion of an approximate 1.17 acre of property located at 1330 Clovis Avenue. David Benjamin applicant, Charles Briggs, representative. Staff?
As indicated, the subject site is located at 1330 Clovis Avenue, which is located on the west side of Clovis Avenue between Barstow and Scott Avenue. To give you a point of reference, there's a brand new 559 tacos on the north side, which has been pretty successful. You can see the subject site on that slide there. The location encompasses approximately 1.17 acres because includes the subject parcel as well as the 559 tacos to the north. But the specific project area actually encompasses the southern half, which is highlighted there in green. So this is a close-up of the site here, and you can see there's various buildings and other structures on the site. There's an existing 1,500 square foot office complex or office building on the site, which is used for, I believe, insurance purposes. That will be converted into a rental and leasing facility office for the use. The area in the back there is, has some existing outbuildings and some structures and probably some C containers that would be removed from the project site as well to allow for the development. So again, this is the entire parcel here. There's some dirt areas there that you can see in purple surrounding the project site. Those will all be utilized for parking areas for the rental facility. Additionally, in blue there, there's an existing two-unit complex there on the site that's been there for lord knows how long. That will be allowed to remain because it's a legal non-conformity. It was legal at the time, no longer conforms. They're not expanding or intensifying that, so it's permitted to stay there. So the request again is for a vehicle rental and leasing facility. The use is permitted through its own district subject to a conditional use permit. The use permit ensures that the operational characteristics remain the same or compatible with adjacent businesses. If you remember several years ago, there was a safe facility at Shaw and Willow that the applicant had under his ownership. He's since sold that property, so he's requested to transfer that to this site here. The CUP also verifies that the use is compatible, as indicated. So this is the applicant's site plan view, just to give you a little detail of what we will be working with on the applicant if approved. The existing 1,500 square foot office unit will be used for the rental facility. The existing apartment building will maintain on the site, and the rest of it will be open. It will be improved with some sort of paving surfaces for the vehicles. We're looking at about 33 parking stalls. I believe 27 is required, with additional parking required for office staff and customer service. That is it in a nutshell. We recommend approval to have the conditional use permit, and we're open to any questions.
Any questions with staff?
I just have one question, Wondo. Is there a reciprocal parking agreement between the two adjacent properties, meaning?
There isn't a formal agreement. They use them for reciprocal parking between the 559 tacos and the subject use. But further to the north, there was never a formalized reciprocal access agreement. So you might have seen a chain running across the back of the properties. There was never a formal agreement in place.
So, okay, so I guess that maybe the correctional question or issue is, could we or would we see rental vehicles in the 559 lot? Or it sounds like there's no formal agreement. I guess that wouldn't prohibit it.
Right.
Okay.
It's possible to be some cross-parking in that if you drive by the site now, you will see some of the cars, the overall parking from 559 coming into this site. So it could transit into the other direction. I think there's sufficient parking there to keep it on-site, but it could happen.
Yeah. Hopefully, the restaurant is successful enough that it's spilling the other way. But I would hate to see rental vehicles go in the other and then impact patrons' access to the restaurant also.
And possibly the applicant can expand on it, indicating the times of how they operate, when the vehicles are there. Are there all 26 vehicles there at one time? That's something we can ask the applicant.
Thank you for.
You got it.
Any other questions?
Yes. Did you say that the dirt portion of this is going to be paved?
It will be part of the site.
Not gravel, but it's going to be paved.
Well, it'll be some sort of parking surface, whether it's pervious or impervious. We will work through that process, through the site plan and view process. The one thing we don't want is if it's a gravel-type surface of it dragging the gravel onto the Clovis Avenue. So we will address that through the site plan interview. I would imagine that's your concern?
Yeah, because it would be hard to put your mark parking in there on the gravel.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is the applicant here? If you want to go ahead and go to the mic and state your name and give your address for the record, please?
I'm Charles Briggs, Briggs Realty. I represent the applicant. Any questions that I can answer? You're hard to understand with your mask on.
Yeah, I apologize.
It muffles everything.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just a quick one, Mr. Briggs. I noticed there's a lot of landscaping. What is the property owner's plans for landscaping there?
What, for landscaping? There's landscaping in front of the office and some minor landscaping between the office and the apartment. The rear landscaping, there'll be some trees back there along the edges of the property lines. But really, beyond that, it's mostly parking spaces.
The line of trees that would be on the, be south end of the property, that line of trees, do we have plans on keeping them or?
The ones on the south side, some of them are junk trees. They will come out.
Okay.
Mulberries, stuff like that. But yes, it will be landscaped. If you had an opportunity to look at Mr. Benjamin's prior site at Shaw and Willow, you can see that he is a good neighbor and he takes care of his landscaping.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Cunningham, the city has a tree preservation ordinance. So before they're allowed to move any trees, we will inspect the site and see what trees can be salvaged and incorporated into the project site.
Thank you, Wondo. Yeah, I appreciate that. I'd like to see, I don't want to see a bare lot in there. I'd like to see, I mean, we can do better.
We won't be taking out any good trees. We appreciate the good ones, but the mulberries and ones like that, they give everybody a problem.
You don't like raking up the little berries?
I don't like stepping on them.
I got you. Thank you.
Just wanted to ask, in follow-up to my earlier question, do you anticipate the rental vehicles staying within the confines of this specific?
I can't understand you.
Sorry about that. Do you anticipate the rental vehicles staying within the confines of this specific site location?
First of all, hopefully, they won't all be there at one time. If they are, he's in trouble. The, I've seen the weekends when he had none there in his previous site. And it varies from weekend to weekend and week to week. He has contracts with some entities like Fresno State to take some out periodically. Couple of other large users who take them out. You'll never see them all there at once.
Yeah, so you don't anticipate vehicles being returned to the adjacent lot to the north? You would expect them all to leave and be returned from this specific project site?
We are, we will not have problems with 559 tacos, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, I think the concern, and it's a little seed concern, is just understanding.
Whatever we do with 559 tacos is another issue. We have a lease with them, and that lease has boundaries in it.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll now open it up to the public for anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item. Do we have anybody online? Nope, talking to him. You're okay.
We do not have anyone online.
Okay. I'll open it up to anyone wishing to speak in opposition. Seen none? Okay. Do you have any rebuttal comments, or are you good to go?
I didn't hear anything to rebut.
Okay, then you're good to go. Okay, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the commission. Comments, questions, motions?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve CUP 2020-TAC-005. Request to process a conditional use permit for the vehicle rental and leasing facility of 1.17 acres at 1330 Clovis.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Betstead, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham to approve CUP 2020-005. Commissioner Betstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes. Moving to the next item. Consider approval. Request to approve the site layout and design of the Loma Vista Village Green and approximately seven acre park that is centrally located within the Loma Vista Community Center South Master Plan area north of Gettysburg Avenue between DeWolff and Leonard Avenue. City of Clovis applicant. Staff?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. Staff is excited to bring before you this evening the site plan review request for approval of SPR 2019-011, which is the city's Loma Vista Village Green Park in the Loma Vista community area. So this park area is approximately seven acres in size and is, the properties, existing properties are currently vacant. It's situated south of Shaw, north of Gettysburg, between DeWolff and Leonard Avenues. A little bit of history. So this park was first memorialized with the Loma Vista specific plan, which was adopted in 2003. Later on, in 2009, a master plan was approved for the Loma Vista Community Centers North and South, which memorialized some design guidelines and a general schematic of the park layout. And of course, in the city's updated general plan in 2014 and the city's updated parks master plan in 2018, the park was also memorialized. So the Loma Vista area is an urban center, otherwise used to be known as the southeast urban center. It's, these urban centers are intended to be self-sustaining communities with a mixture of land uses, including open space. And really what that is, is to accommodate the growing cities and to accommodate orderly growth. And with that, the urban center, the concept of urban centers were designed, and the Loma Vista Urban Center was the city's first urban center community area. So this area here provides, the intent of it is to provide a sense of a small-town community where residents don't really need to leave this general area for their commercial needs and open space needs. So Loma Vista has been growing significantly, as commissioners are aware, with past entitlements for residences. We're currently at a 65% buildout. And again, most of those development are residential development. And we will start to see commercial development coming up here soon with the first at the south, at the northwest corner of Shaw and Leonard. And hopefully, a proposed one to the south of that, at the southwest corner of Shaw and Leonard. And then, of course, this open space area, the Village Green. The Village Green is a unique park in that it's not, it's not designed like a typical park you see in the city here. It was, it's really considered the heart of the Loma Vista community and was envisioned and planned and designed as a diverse, community-oriented space, as you'll see with the upcoming schematics. So this was the original park concept, in which hopefully would be memorialized and approved by commissioners and council next month. In terms of the project scope, there are some primary outstanding areas. Main entry-drop-off area, children's play area, open space, plaza at the center of the park with clock tower and restrooms, food truck parking. And what's really special about this is an amphitheater that'll accommodate events in this area here. So this is just a closer look at the entry and drop-off area here. This is located off of Sanders and Rialto. And this is that, the monument sign that's designed to greet visitors. And this street here, Sanders, looking north. And this is the same view, but from Gettysburg Avenue looking through the Sanders corridor. This is the current state of this same corridor. Highlighted in red here are children's play area. There will be two separate play areas accommodating kids from the ages two to five and five to 12. And this portion, this element of the park will come, will probably come at a later date as the city, the PDS Department is currently looking for funding to develop the play structures in this area. And this is just a schematic of how that area could look like. And again, these concepts that I'm going to be showing you are just, again, they're concepts. They may not, the park may not end up looking exactly like that, but it's just to give you an idea of what the park could look like. The areas in red, there are open space areas. And the two smaller areas located on the south side of the park are about 9,000 square foot areas, generally used for open space, but are also leasable. So people can reserve them for special events or whatnot. And that'll be done through our Parks Department. The larger open space area will also serve as seating area and viewing area whenever there are events utilizing the amphitheater. And this is just another concept of how that area may look. Again, this is in that area looking south towards the center plaza. So this here shows what the clock tower and restroom area, as well as the plaza area, how that may look like. These are the elevations for that structure, which includes the restroom as well as the clock tower. That clock tower is currently designed at 56 feet in height. And this main structure is 26 feet in height. And in terms of architecture, we really wanted to capture that California Historic Mission Revival architecture that you do see quite a bit in this area here. And architecture here will also be compatible with that of the up and coming Fire Station 6. Again, just another view of that area. And there is a proposed water feature at the center of the park in the middle of the plaza. We don't quite know exactly how that water feature's going to look like yet, but we're thinking maybe a fountain similar to this. So there are seating areas, of course, it's a park. Seating areas that are located randomly throughout the park. Along the walkways of the park will be benches. Other variety of seating will include feet walls in the play area, as well as some areas in the plaza. And then, of course, picnic tables, tables and chairs. This is a concept of how the amphitheater may look like, standing, if you're standing at the center of the plaza. And again, this is just a conceptual of how the band shelf for the amphitheater may look like. A lot of these details will be refined during the construction design phase. And the areas highlighted in red are areas that will accommodate food trucks. As commissioners are probably aware, food trucks are very, becoming really popular. And so there haven't been really many developments that are designed to accommodate them. So this will be, I think, I think maybe our first, in Clovis here anyway. And so the idea with this area is that food trucks will be able to hook up to electrical ports in these areas, so they don't have to provide generators and whatnot. We don't exactly have a program in terms of how, if it's going to be a first-come, first-served thing, but that's definitely something that we're planning on looking into. And then this is just a conceptual of how that would, that area would look like. In terms of scheduling and timeline, these are just, really just rough scheduling. By the end of this year, we hope to complete the entitlement phase, which is taking this SPR request through Planning Commission and Council for approval. Once we do receive, once and if we do receive approval, we're hoping to start the construction design phase in 2021, which again is where the defined details of the park will be hashed out. And from there, if everything goes well, we would hope to begin construction in 2022 with hopeful completion of the park in March of 2023. With that, staff recommends that Planning Commission approve SPR 2019-11. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Just a quick one. Lily, where's Station 6 of the fire department going in in relationship to the park?
Yeah, let me go back here on the map to show you. So it's actually just north of the park. And if you're standing at the center of the plaza looking north, you'll be able to see the fire station. So it's going to be located just right here in this area. Yeah.
Is there going to be a plan for putting in charging stations?
Yes, I believe that is, those are, again, details that will be hashed out during the construction design phase.
Because that is the future, as we know.
Absolutely.
2035. So we're going to need them there. The other thing is, I know we have a problem in all of our parks. But our parks really don't have anything for the kids 12 years and older. And maybe this might be one we need to put that in there because lifestyle activities changing. And I think you're going to see more of them. And I see, I notice them in parks now, more people in the parks and everything, that we need to put somewhere for activities for the kids older than 12 years old. Basketball courts, maybe, volleyball courts, something. But need to think about what type of activity can be incorporated into that. And I thought we had approved multi-use on both sides of that before. Maybe that was the master plan, but I thought we had approved it and one of the builders was going to build on the west side of that park. But if there's multifamily housing that's going in that area, we need something for those kids that are in those developments. So we need to think about something for those kids.
Yes, definitely understood. And you do make a great point, Commissioner Hinkle. At the time that this park was designed during the master site, the master plan phase, the community definitely was involved in the designing of the park through public hearings and whatnot. And so I think that the idea with this park is, it's not so much that it's designed as a park, but more so as a community-oriented area. And with the limitations of, you know, just the seven acres, we were able to accommodate the events as well as children's play areas and leasable areas and social areas where people can sit. But I definitely understand your point.
Yeah, just from what you have here, the two open areas on the north end, something on each of those could be put in there. You have the room for it. But please, think about that, and we need to think about these kids. We're going to have some real issues in the future, and we need somewhere for these kids to go.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, seen none. Since you are the applicant, I will now open it up to the public for anyone here to speak in favor of this item. Anyone online? No? Okay. Okay, anyone here to speak in opposition? Do you want to speak? Okay, if you want to go ahead and go to the podium and give your first and last name and your address for the record, please?
Thank you, guys, for your time. My name is Erica McFarland. My address is 2760 Parkwall Lane. And so my backyard actually lines up to Sanders Avenue, where the entrance for this park will be planned. I'm not necessarily opposed to the park. I'm not necessarily opposed to the park, but I did have two notes that I wanted to be brought to attention tonight. One I've discussed with Lily, and she's been great actually with communicating with me about, and that is the concern about a space for dogs, since this is supposed to be kind of an all inclusive area. And with the amount of people being brought in, like you guys have discussed already, I would like to see something going where we can take dogs off leash, whether it's a small area or not. That way we do not have to drive somewhere else to take our dogs to a dog park. I think having this in the area is great for many reasons, and I would like to see something accommodated for those who do have dogs in this space. My second area of concern with the park is because I live so close and with my backyard backing up to this, I'm concerned that right now it's obviously a city street, so public parking, I'm assuming would be allowed. And I have a couple of concerns about that. I've seen on Clovis Avenue and Alluvial on that south side where there's no parking designated for people who want to come and participate or be at this park. It can be a hazard for families who are trying to get in and out of their cars if that is the main street to drop off your family or whoever at the park. So public safety on that street is a concern of mine with the parking as well as the noise and activity that that brings. Just in general, I believe there should be, I do like the idea of designated parking for the food trucks. I think that is a great idea. I just would like to see some sort of parking if we can for those who want to come participate at the park. There's going to be a lot of area to gather, and you will have people from the community coming in, but I do think it'd be beneficial to have some sort of designated parking and if we can allow, somehow not allow people to park on that main street where there's going to be a lot of traffic trying to drop off family members and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public portion. Lily, do you have any closing comments or rebuttal?
Yeah, so, thank you Erica. So in regards to the dog, dog park or areas designated for dogs, the city, not so long ago in 2018, or I believe it's last year, actually just last year, approved a dog park master plan. And it was very, the community was very much involved in, in the development of that master plan. And Erica, I'm not sure if you received the plan that Claudia emailed you, but there is a designated dog park area in the Plaza Templo Park that is just north of this area here on DeWuff and I believe Barstow. So that's, that's in the plans, it's in the works. I'm not exactly sure how far in the, in the future, or how close in the future that will occur, but definitely the city has developed a dog park master plan and has incorporated areas in the city designated for that use. And then in regards to parking, I just wanted to bring back up this schematic plan. There will be parking, it's not, it's public parking because it's a public street, so it's not designated for the park itself. But there will be something over roughly, and this is a schematic, so again, at design phase, we'll know exactly how many parking stalls we can fit in this area. Probably roughly 70 to 80 stalls just in this area that you see. There is also parallel parking on the other side of these streets, Encino and Person's Avenue, that'll, that'll be available for public parking as well. Now, as commissioners are aware, this area was planned as a high density area, so it's a little more dense, and that's where the importance of our trail system comes in. So with that, the community centers do have really great planned trail connectivity. In fact, there's a trail that will be intercepted just north of the park, through the park, and then of course out on Sanders onto Gettysburg Avenue. And this network will tie in with the rest of the Loma Vista-Paseo networks. So I think a lot of park visitors anticipated to be people in that community and hopefully would be utilizing non-motorized transportation methods.
Thank you. I will bring it back to the commission for any comments? I wasn't sure if you were going to speak.
I'm prepared to make a motion if we're all discussing it. I'll make a motion, we approve SPR 2019-11, subject to the conditions listed in Attachment One.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Chair Hatcher, to approve SPR 2019-11. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bettsit?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Moving on to the next item, Consider Approval GPA 2020-004, a request to amend the text of the Shaw Avenue specific plan to permit drive-through uses, City of Clovis applicants.
Good evening Chair Hatcher, members of the commission. Let me get to my presentation. Okay, so the item before you tonight is GPA 2020-004, and it's a request to remove the prohibition on drive-throughs for the Shaw Avenue specific plan boundary, as you can see here, highlighted in green. It goes from Clovis to Temperance, and it's generally most of the shopping centers that you see right along the frontage of Shaw. So the Shaw Avenue specific plan was adopted in 1978 with its last major amendment in 1994, which added the prohibition on drive-throughs. The purpose of that was to prevent partially lineal and strict commercial between Clovis and Temperance. And they wanted to, the focus of the plan was to encourage retail and commercial in specific centers. So if you, you know, drive along Shaw right now, you can see that it's mostly, you know, very defined shopping centers. With that, that, the primary intent of that specific plan has basically been achieved since its original inception. So this image right here shows where the current and future drive-throughs currently occur along Shaw. As you can see, there's, there's some older ones such as a bank and Taco Bell and Foster's Freeze. But more recently, we've recently just passed the Raising Cane's on the City Council, which you guys also saw just last month. 2018 was a ride and shine, and then earlier this year, there was a human bean and also a future drive-through, which was also approved. So kind of based on those market trends and shifts, the conversation came up about a broader policy change, which would help kind of streamline the process as developers come in and either help revitalize some of these shopping centers or in some cases in the limited vacant areas, be able to put drive-throughs without having to go through a specific plan, a specific plan amendment every single time. So the proposed revisions would modify a little bit of the language in Policy 11 and 12 in the specific plan, which is where the prohibition on drive-throughs is located. And in one of your attachments, Attachment Two will show the proposed text amendments there, and really what it would do is require that drive-throughs require conditional use permit, kind of how it is now where other drive-throughs are allowed. So for drive-throughs that would be allowed in this area, they would still come before commission for consideration and would also be held to the standards that we have now for drive-throughs in terms of queuing and other development standards. So when staff was looking at this, you know, up until now, the prohibition on drive-throughs has really dissuaded at least some potential developers throughout the years on some of the vacant and underutilized sites. Certainly there's been a shift in market support for drive-through uses, especially during this COVID era. And since 2018, four drive-throughs have been approved, which is kind of showing a trend or a pattern here. The removal of the prohibition would still support many of the economic goals and policies included in the general plan, and this would provide an opportunity for minimizing vacancies and turnover as retail continues to struggle. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation, and we recommend approval for the request to amend the text of the Shaw Avenue specific plan to allow for drive-throughs.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public for... Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Brandon.
I tried to get it lit up as quick as I could. Just one quick question Ricky. So I note, and you emphasize that there's still a CUP required if someone wants to come in and put a drive-through. Does this change anything with regard to an appeal process if we were to have a CUP before us and we denied it for whatever reason? Is it just the traditional, they would take it and appeal it to the council? There's no nuance associated with this in that regard?
No, that's correct. It would function how any other CUP is now, where it would still be appealable, and if anything was denied here, it could go to council. So it would function just as any other CUP for other drive-throughs.
Thank you.
You have a question? Seeing none, I'll now open it up to anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll bring you back. If anybody has any comments, final comment? Well, seeing none, I will make a motion to approve GPA 2020-004.
I'll second. I have a motion by Chair Hatcher, seconded by Commissioner Bettsit, to approve GPA 2020-004. Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bettsit?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Moving on, Consider Approval GPA 2020-003, a request to amend the text of the general plan to incorporate language to ensure consistency between the general plan and the Fresno County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, City of Clovis applicants.
Turn my mic on. This is a proposal by the city to amend its general plan, and specifically to amend the text in Policy 3.11 regarding airport land use compatibility. The intent is to ensure consistency with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, and it's specifically in relation to a requirement from the California Public Utility Code that requires consistency between the general plan and the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. The Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, which I may refer to as just the Compatibility Plan or to the ALUCP, is a plan that's prepared and adopted by the Fresno County Land Use Commission, Airport Land Use Commission, or the ALUC. The purpose of the plan is to address compatibility of uses and facilities in the vicinity of airports, and to look at things like noise and safety, and to make sure that airport operational integrity is maintained. The Compatibility Plan was last updated in 2018, and that triggered the requirement that we're dealing with today for consistency, consistency analysis. A positive consistency determination, and the order of that is review by the commission, and then a review by the Airport Land Use Commission, and then final action by the council. If all of that occurs, as I described, it would eliminate the need for the city to submit individual development projects to the ALUC for the review, which is what we are currently doing. So getting into a little bit of the detail of the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, an airport influence area is established in, for each airport in the plan, and that's the area that is identified as being potentially affected by noise and safety and overflight issues for each airport within the planning area. A portion of the City of Clovis is located within the airport influence area for the Fresno-Yosemite International, or FYI Airport. Within the AIA, safety zones are established to define compatibility criteria and policies within the airport influence area. So really, we're getting down from the bigger area, which is the airport influence area, down to the discussion of specific safety zones, and that's kind of where we get to the nitty gritty of what kind of uses are allowed and what uses are prohibited. The airport influence area also includes noise contour maps that are provided to show variations in potential noise exposure from airport and aircraft operations. So I know it's a little bit hard to see, but there are variable noise contours there that go in more or less concentric rings from the airport extending outward. This is zooming in a little bit on the airport influence area for FYI. You can see that the southwest portion of Clovis is located within the airport influence area. And that purple area is within the traffic pattern zone. So you can see in proportion to the overall airport influence area, the traffic pattern zone takes up the bulk of the acreage. Now to go back here just a little bit, let me go backwards and show you this map. That is, I don't, I don't have a measurement on it, but that is many, many square miles of land. I don't know that you can read the northern tip, but there's a little bit of wording under where it says Exhibit D1, so in the top left corner of the graphic, that says Madera County. So that's how far away the edge of that dark blue area is. So it extends from, from Madera County, I think into or near Sankar. It's a very large area. Let's go back here, shows you where the City of Clovis lies, and then we talk about being within the traffic pattern zone or Safety Zone Six. So what are the characteristics of Safety Zone Six? It is really identified as being, having a low aircraft accident risk in the plan. It has the least restrictive compatibility criteria. There are no limits on residential density, and the non-residential intensity is limited to 300 persons per acre, which again is the most lenient criteria around the airport. Outdoor stadiums and similar high intensity uses are prohibited. And in terms of heights, really, anything up to 100 feet is not a problem. Anything over 100 feet, as I'll talk about in a minute, does require a review. So I acknowledge that general plan consistency is necessary. The Compatibility Plan, it talks about three different sets of questions to look at when considering consistency. The first is, are there any conflicts with residential density, non-residential intensity, or prohibited uses between what's specified in the Compatibility Plan and what's specified in the general plan? Secondly, are residential noise criteria in the general plan consistent with the compatibility criteria for noise? And third, are there policies in place in the city's documents that address compatibility and related issues that are specified in the Compatibility Plan? So those are really the three blocks of questions that we look at when evaluating consistency. So what did we find when we did that? Importantly, we found that there were no direct conflicts identified between the general plan and the compatibility plan. That was a great finding. However, there are several compatibility criteria in the, in the airport plan that are not clearly referenced in the city's 2014 general plan. And it's possible that the absence of clear policy requirements could lead to incompatible uses or a lack of compliance with compatibility plan policies as new projects are presented and approved by the city. Therefore, it's staff's recommendation that general plan policy 3.11 should be amended to clearly reference applicable compatibility criteria in the ALUCP. So those recommended amendments are included in your staff report as Attachment Two. I can give you a quick summary of what they do. It would directly prohibit non-residential projects exceeding 300 persons per acre. They prohibit those stadiums and similar high intensity uses. It would require that projects be reviewed and avoid and prohibit hazards of flight as defined. And it would incorporate non-conforming use language from the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. Now, our code at present includes language dealing with non-conforming uses, but it doesn't really address the kind of non-conforming uses the airport compatibility plan does. So this was the specific language that's directed from that compatibility plan. It would require that projects exceeding 100 feet in height be referred to the ALUC for determination. Clearly, that's going to come down to an occasional cell tower. And finally, it would note that the city will comply with public utility code requirements to submit projects to the ALUC. What those projects are basically are general plan amendments and changes to the codes. There's one additional adjustment that I would like to add this evening. We described it in the analysis... We described it in the analysis. It's provided as attachment three to your report, but for some reason, it didn't make its way into the actual recommended amendment language. And it's specifically quoted there on the screen. Airport disclosure notices shall be required within the airport influence area utilizing the recommended notice language and following the disclosure guidance outlined in the ALUCP. Again, following the direct recommendations from the compatibility plan. With that, staff recommends that the commission adopt a resolution recommending approval of the general plan amendment with the addition of that disclosure language that's been just described and included in the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if the commission has any.
Yeah, if you could go back in your presentation to, it was, I think it was the first multicolor diagram, does it show sound levels within the airport influence area? And what are those sound levels that cover the City of Clovis?
So there's a little bit of overlap between the furthest noise contour, which is, I believe, 60 decibels, and the city's planning area. And 60, no, I'm sorry, 65 noise decibels is both the city and the airport standard for residential noise criteria. So the furthest you get in, I was going to say, I don't have it. The furthest you get in, it's either 70 or above inside contour, but the furthest out that I think is included in that is 60.
And this is an agreement by both the City of Clovis and the airport influence area, the LULAC or LULAP, whatever it is. The reason I bring it up is I've had occasion on numerous times to be in the area, the 41 Freeway in Dakota, which is, I guess, within the first circle, and have experienced noise levels that exceed 100 decibels. I have a decimal meter, and it exceeds 100 decibels, which, as you know, constitutes physical injury, can, physical injury to hearing in it. Generally coincides with the takeoff of the military jets. They're very, very loud. And I know they do maneuvers as well that cover, that circle our city. So I'm just wondering, do we have any recourse? Or this whole document looks like it's kind of one-sided, that we have to agree with what they have, their committee has come up with?
That's the equation, yes. We, it is a public process, so just like when the city updates its general plan or a specific plan, the adoption of the Airport Land Use Plan is a public process. But in terms of the technical components of it, the contours are going to be what the contours are. And once it's adopted, we're reacting to that adopted plan, yeah. But the city's exposure to noise is not particularly sensitive in that our general plan already includes noise exposure criteria that would be significant. So regardless of whether there were noise exposure limits in the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, our general plan specifies that, for instance, residential uses shouldn't exceed 65 decibels, including, you know, the 15.
And these, these layers, if you will, that I'm seeing up on the map, and are they, do they have criteria of decimal ratings for each layer? And if so, who's come up with that? Is that the airport influence area, it isn't us? They're saying we will maintain that.
Yeah, I don't know that that is presented as a limitation on the part of airport operations. I think that is the mapped in terms of a compatibility criteria. So it's kind of a disclosure that this is, you know, users and the public should understand that there's an airport here, and it's going to be loud close to the airport and slightly less loud to further.
But they haven't defined what loud is on each layer.
There are decimal ratings. If I had the ability to blow it up, I would, but we don't have that technology right with us. But there are, each of those red contour lines has a decimal rating associated with it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring you back. Final comments, questions, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve GPA 2020-004, subject to the addition of the language in the presentation tonight. Zero, am I on the wrong one? Probably am. Yeah, I am. Sorry about that. Yes, 2020-003.
A second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Chair Hatcher, to approve GPA 2020-003, subject to the comments made by Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bettsid?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any old business? None?
None.
Any new business?
No new business.
Okay, then I will adjourn this meeting at 6:58. Thank you.